Let's do a quick roll call. Kendra?
Here.
Lilly?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
David?
Here.
Amy? And myself.
I unmute herself.
Yeah, I saw her speak, so.
Here.
Okay, I'm here. Okay, first be public forum. And if there's anybody lined up for public forum, anybody? Nope.
No hands up.
Pardon?
I don't see any hands up, so.
So first item would be the FY21 budget presentation in the public hearing. So let's, we'll start with the budget presentation and then open up for the public hearing.
Okay.
PD, Dr. Galston?
Thank you, one, one second while I get the appropriate slideshow going. Okay, and now I'm going to share my screen. I forgot how to do that. Hold on. Sorry, now, now that, now that we're, we were waiting for 20 minutes, now I'm the one that's fumbling here. Hold on one second. There we go, let's try that. We're gonna show the slideshow from the beginning. There we go, does everybody see the slideshow?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So thank you all for joining us this evening to review the Watertown Public Schools FY21 School Department Recommended Budget. This is the culmination of many, many months of work in terms of trying to determine what it is that we would like to prioritize and allocate for FY21 in terms of the budget. As always, when we talk about the budget, we ground all of the work that we're doing within our mission, which is to prepare all students for life by engaging them in a challenging and meaningful education within an inclusive and diverse, and the vision of inspiring excellence for all. Now, we would like all of our students to explore and shape the world around them. And we keep our budget requests within our core values of equity, excellence, and community. Don't know what that is. We have four strategic objectives that guide our work within our school districts. These objectives are part of our district improvement strategy. And we are now completing year two of this, and we will have two more years to go. But once again, all of the budget requests and allocations that we've made this year are completely aligned with our strategic objectives. I just want to go over a few of our accomplishments for our Watertown High School class of 2019 graduating class. So this is the students, these are the students who graduated last year. We don't have this data yet for this year, but I do want to highlight the fact that within the class of 2019, we had four AP scholars with honors, 12 AP scholars with distinction, and eight AP scholars. And there is something that's supposed to be there, too. National Merit Letters of Commendation, we had two of those, which we recognized as a school committee a couple of months back. We had 43 out of 148 of our students qualifying for the Adams Scholarship, which was 29% of our student body for the seniors. And then our percentage of students attending two or four-year colleges was 91% last year. So that's an excellent measure of our students moving on beyond our K-12 system and continuing with their education. And this is just a listing, I would like to mention that the colleges here are places that they, our students this year, so the class of 2020, these are the colleges that they've been accepted into. It doesn't mean that this is where they're going, but these are the acceptances that we have. I would say that many acceptances have come in after the closing of schools, and therefore this, this list is not complete. But it certainly is the start of what it is, what we were hearing in terms of what are, where our students were accepted. So just in terms of going through the accomplishments in this past year, we just talked about our AP results. We had 84% of our students scoring three or higher, and 28% of our students taking the AP tests scoring a five. So all of our K-8 teachers have worked with an instructional coach. This is something that we've had as a priority in the last couple of years in terms of the budgets. On one or more of the following areas, data meetings, co-planning, co-teaching, and formal coaching cycles. We've implemented the responsive classroom social-emotional learning curriculum in grades K-8. We started with K-5, actually two years ago, and rolled in middle school this year. So 98% of our elementary staff have participated in a full day or more of social-emotional learning PD around responsive classroom. One of our great accomplishments this year was that our Hosmer Elementary School was designated a school of distinction for its high growth on the 2019 MCAS. And we have seen that our strategic planning has resulted in significant student achievement and growth as measured by internal and state assessments. For example, our third-grade cohort of students across three elementary schools demonstrated a 23% increase in English Language Arts and a 15% increase in math. In terms of meeting or exceeding expectations from the 2017 administration to the 2019. This is actually pretty important because I know that the school committee is aware, but for everyone out there. We started our district improvement strategy really focused on the elementary schools. And we're seeing the work that's being done by our teachers and our staff paying off in terms of how we're doing with our standardized assessments. Which I would mention are standards-based, and we are now definitely moving in the direction of being aligned to the standards, and that's showing up on the state assessments. More accomplishments, K-12. We are in year two of implementation of our Lucy Cawkins Research-Based Units of Study for Teaching Reading. I just want to make, and writing into grades grade six. I do want to mention that Lucy Cawkins is just part of our Balanced Literacy Programming, which incorporates not only the Reader's Workshop, but Word Study, and we're also implementing the Writer's Workshop as well. We are in our, now it's our fourth year, sorry, of FLESS implementation. So we are now in grades K-1, 2, and into grade 3. So right now, our students K through 3 are receiving foreign language at the elementary school. Spanish. Created sheltered social studies in SLIF, students with limited or informal formal education, sorry. Interrupted, let me just take a moment. That students with limited or interrupted formal education, that's what SLIF stands for. In terms of math classes to support the academic needs of our students at Watertown Middle School. We are one-to-one. We know that our students 9 to 12 take home. Our middle school students were one-to-one in terms of having them during the day. Right now, they are at home with their arts, all of our grades 3 to 5, but enough device. This is for Chromebook, as well as iPads in grades K and 1. We continue to move our educational vision of a new Watertown High School from the eligibility phase to the feasibility phase with the MSBA. We are in year two of full implementation of iReady. We are continuing with our regular collaborative inquiry meetings for grade-level teaching teams at all K-8 grade levels. We also have our professional learning teams that meet across the board, but include the high school, and our high school teachers have common planning time throughout the day as well. This year, we have implemented coaching. It's called MQI, Mathematics Quality of Instruction, for our grade 6 math teachers. This is as a result of a retirement that we had in the middle of the year, but to pick up from the math coach's retirement, we have partnered with Harvard to help our math teachers along the way. But we certainly are, are, I think, when you, when you think about our budget, what we've done and what we stuck to as a core value is supporting our teachers, not just with one-and-done professional development, meaning a workshop here or a full-day training there, but actually embedded, ongoing professional development in all of our programs. The goal is not to just expect that one day is going to help a teacher for 180 days when they're in the classroom. So we work on making sure that we have ongoing embedded professional development throughout the year for all of our teachers. This is just an overview of our enrollment in terms of our students, pre-K through grade 12. As the slides progress, we'll see a little bit more about our enrollment projections. Right now, we are, you know, we have a bubble, we've seen a bubble, as you can see from the slide, in terms of K-1, 2, 3. And so we anticipate that moving forward, you know, three to four years from now, we're going to see that impact rolling into the middle school and then up into the high school as well. This is just a breakdown of our district demographics. As I mentioned in the, one of the subcommittee meetings, and is that when we look at our demographics, one of the things that's a little bit misleading is the white race in terms of, when it is broken down. It encompasses Puebla, and from Portugal, and from the Middle East. So it is, it's a little bit misleading in the sense of many of the people within the white category in Watertown, actually, their first language is not English. So that impacts a lot of what it is that we do within our schools. So this is just a, a look at our enrollment projections from 2019 to 2029. We're looking here from, you know, a population of 2460 up to 2660. You can see kind of a steady increase, pretty, pretty dramatic in the next couple of years, but then leveling off up into school year 29. We do know that this does not take into account that we are potentially building new schools or improving our high school. And so those numbers might fluctuate once we do have those new building projects online. But right now, based on your typical demographic measures, this is what we are looking at in terms of the future for our enrollment. So it's something that, like I said, over the course of many, many months, it begins in September, and this year, I think, is going to roll into, well into June. And throughout the course of the, the school year, we are meeting together to determine our priorities, to establish what the delta might be, to have discussions as a larger group, to ensure that what it is that we put forward is something that we believe in as a district. So in terms of our current budget guidance from the town, would be a 5% increase. You know, this, remember that this is predicated on work that was done, obviously, prior to the situation that we find ourselves in right now with COVID-19. We are presenting this budget based on those original guidelines, but that doesn't mean that, you know, moving forward, that might not change. But I just want to acknowledge the fact that this is what we budgeted based on the information that we had prior to the closure. So what we can see with the 5% increase is that the actual dollar increase to our budget would be $2,522,071. And once we work through our level service budget, we, which accounts for most of that increase, really 92.2% of that increase, that left us with $197,487 to look for new requests and to allocate funds that we thought would help us moving forward with our district improvement strategy. So of that 5%, only 7.8% of that was available for new asks. But our level service budget is, as, as people are pretty much aware, that we are very committed to maintaining some of our priorities in terms of class size, small class sizes. Offering numbers of opportunities for our students, especially at the high school level. Remaining and retaining excellent mental health services for our students within the schools, and a robust extracurricular and during-the-day offerings for music, arts, and many other interests that we have for our students. So that is why it is that our level service budget pretty much assumes most of the increase that we would be receiving. But we do have some items that we've put in terms of additional allocations for this coming up year. This is just an overview of our allocation for the budget in terms of how it is that we got to the $52,963,495. That is the recommended budget. And then this is broken down further in terms of looking at, this is just a visual representation for everyone out there of how it is that we allocate our funds. Last year, you can see student service is about the same, regular day is a little bit higher now. Part of that is because we've settled the, our contract with our teachers. And last year, that money was set aside, but this year it's been allocated to the teachers. So that's one of the differences in regular day. But for the most part, I think what the slide shows is that we're, we're pretty steady. Insistent in terms, in terms of the budget drivers this year. So there were a couple of things that impacted the level services budget. That we actually allocated in FY20, based on availability within the budget. We added part-time building-based substitutes in our, our schools. And those are, again, part-time, and they've helped out a lot in terms of providing ongoing coverage for our schools. Finding substitutes right now is very difficult. But that was something that we felt was necessary to start this year, and as part of the level services budget next year. There was an addition of a part-time administrative assistant. And that person works with our curriculum coordinators in order to assist with them throughout the year. It was a very needed position, we did not have that, at least we haven't had it for several years. And it became abundantly clear that that was something that was needed. So the other portion of that person's salary is funded through Title I, and they also do a lot of work with Title I. And the other addition that we had this year was a 1.0 full-time social worker. We had hired a social worker at the end of last year, who was equally split between the Lowell and the middle school. But due to increases in programming that we have at the Lowell, it became very necessary to add another social worker, so we'd have a dedicated one for our ISP program at the middle school and at the Lowell. So that's why we added that this year. So next year, in terms of maintaining level services, whoops, sorry. We've added one full-time nurse that's within the level services. That is necessary because of the fact that we're moving our preschool and pre-kindergarten programs to the Phillips Administration Building. And right now, there is a part-time nurse who also is the float nurse for the district. And in order to continue having the float nurse, which is exceedingly vital, we would have to add a full-time nurse to the nursing staff. So that is one of the requests that we, not, it's not a request, it's within the level services budget. And then to continue with our FLESS program, considering that we've committed to this for four years. This is, I, we consider this part of level services to continue moving forward with grade 4. Once we hire this teacher, then we will actually be done in terms of, I'm sorry, in terms of staffing our foreign language at the elementary school. So this is the last time that we'll be requesting, unless there's a big boost in population, don't get me wrong. The last time in terms of the current context that we would be asking for FTE. So in terms of expenses with the FY21 budgets, the drivers that we have is we have a pretty hefty increase for out-of-district tuition. That's based on state setting the tuition rates. We had a large increase at Perkins School for the Blind. It's actually probably about half of that total. And so we need to, we, we are more than committed to ensuring that our students get what they need and deserve. And therefore, we just had to make sure that we budgeted appropriately for out-of-district tuition. Another increase that we had was $163,257 for our Minuteman students. As we know, the Minuteman is charging capital, a capital fee, which we went over in depth last year for our students. And there's an increase of that by $1,600 in addition to the $6,100 that was charged last year. So that accounts for $104,000. There's 2% inflation added to the tuition. We've estimated that at this point in time because the actual rates have not been set. And there was definitely an increase from special education from $6,200 per student to $7,400. So that is how we ended up with an additional $163,257 for Minuteman. The last budget driver that's part of level services is to have a, sorry, I must admit somebody to the meeting, sorry. Is to add, and look at that. Is to add a, what, right now, it's, we've determined that we're probably going to end up needing two kind of buses, and we're not exactly sure where that will be budgeted from, but we wanted to make sure that we budgeted at least for one bus. And it might be possible to fund a second bus if we need to, but this was part of the level services budget was to have one kind of bus. And then this is the broken down by salary in terms of the budget. And then additionally, based on expenses, this is all put together in terms of salary and non-salary that ends with the final number for our budget. I just wanted to review of that delta, the $197,487 delta that we had. We have put forth and are moving forward with the following priorities. These priorities were determined by the larger district leadership team, and then they were vetted through the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. And you can see there's a ranking, and that was done by the larger group in terms of, on a scale of one to three, what it is that we thought was most important. So the additions that we've had, based on the town guidelines, are a halftime human resources assistant, increasing our district registrar to a full-time position. One elementary coach, an instructional coach. And then co-teaching planning time, so I can explain a little bit more about these. For sure, the, the idea of a, of a human resources assistant is because we absolutely need that, given the amount of people that we have working within our, our districts. The registrar right now is, is only registering our pre-K and elementary students, and we would like to make that across the board for the district. It will help to eliminate any kind of abnormalities or, or registration issues that we seem to have had over the last, past couple of years. So we want to make sure that we are ensuring that what it is that we're doing with our registration is consistent and effective. The elementary coaches, right now, we have two, we have a math coach and a literacy coach that are split between the Lowell and the K-12. And if we add an additional coach, you know, be it an instructional coach of the K-12, that will allow for more direct support for our teachers. And the co-teacher's planning time is due to the fact that we have several people who are in co-teaching partnerships that aren't afforded an opportunity before school starts to actually meet together. So we have planned here to stipend teachers to be able to meet and plan prior to the beginning of the year. And then the last one on the list is a Watertown Middle School ESL teacher. And this is definitely necessary, which we talked about before. We have an increase in our SLIF students, once again, that students with limited or interrupted formal education, especially at the middle school and high school level. And this has become very necessary and is a priority for us. We had some attrition savings, so we have retirements that we're aware of, and some resignations that we are budgeting this year for, in terms of turnover, turnover, so that we're able to fund some of the priorities that we have. We also have an offset from the IDEA grants that we're going to take to ensure that we have another occupational therapist within. We had a retirement of a certified occupational therapist assistant, a CODA, and we're going to replace that person as, with a national occupational therapist. And we're going to offset that from the IDEA grant. And then the other funded priorities was, right, right now, at this point, is there was a request for, well, not even a request, but we thought that it would be good to have two additional middle school teachers to help with the bubble that we have, that we're seeing within our eighth grade, which will, sorry, ours current seventh grade and next year's eighth grade. And some other larger class sizes. So we felt that it would be great to be able to have two Watertown Middle School teachers. But based on what we have right now, we are proposing that we fund one and see in the course of the next couple of months what happens from there. We have a request for a .2 drama teacher, which would help to build our program over the course of five years. Right now, drama is that the teacher is a .2 drama teacher, so she would become a .4 drama teacher. And this is the occupational therapist that I just mentioned. And last but not least, is funding some of the responsive classroom training. So this is just a breakdown of the budget by object code. We broke the object codes by professional salaries, clerical salaries, other salaries, contracted services, supplies and materials, and other expenditures. And then from here, I just want to just highlight very high level the fact that our budget is, there's, there are items that we take direct offsets in terms of grants and revolving accounts. And otherwise, a lot of our grants fund additional and supplemental opportunities for our students. For example, Title I, we take part of Title I to offset some of our teacher salaries, but most of it actually goes to tutoring and providing programming over the summer to support our students who may be struggling. So we have approx, just under $4 million in grant funding. And again, we use some of that to offset our operating budget, and the rest of it is used to supplement the activities that we have within our schools. Oftentimes, the federal grants don't allow you to necessarily supplant what it is that an operating budget should fund. So some people might wonder, well, why don't you just take the whole Title I grant and use it for staff? If we can actually afford it and use it, then that's what we do with our Title I grants and use the rest for supplemental services for our students. And then, so from that then, as I just mentioned, we do take some of the offsets from our revolving accounts and some of the grants and other additional revenue streams that we have to create the budget that we have before you. So once again, this is just an overview of comparing Watertown to other districts. This lags behind a little bit in terms of the data, but this is the most recent data that we have. It just looks at per pupil spending. Once again, you know, Watertown is a small district, but we have extensive services for students. And so our per pupil might seem a little bit high, but if you start to break it down and think about what it is that we're providing Watertown, it has a lot to do with those, the idea of small class sizes, really supporting our students' mental health. You know, ensuring that we are able to deliver the services necessary and committing to providing students whatever education they need, whether it be within the district or outside of the district, which I think is why our per pupil spending tends to be a little bit higher than others. But I assure you that we are working very hard to, to do what's best for our students in Watertown. So at this point, if you have any questions to the larger community out there, this presentation can be found under the School Committee tab. You can call me at any point in time, actually, even though the offices are closed. If you leave a voicemail, I will get back to you within a day. Or you can email myself or Heidi Perkins if you have any questions moving forward. I'm just going to flip back because I think that probably the slide that is most relevant for the conversation is just looking at the town budget guidance. So I'm going to hand it over to the chair. For any questions that people might have. John? Oh, I might have to unmute, hold on, hold please. Yep. I'm just getting here. Hold on. He's probably going, okay. John, are you there? Okay, I have unmuted him, I'm not sure what's there.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
I can, yes.
Where's my camera? Oh, here. Okay, there we go. All right, so I'm on? Okay, okay. So let me, just two things before we kind of open up for questions. One, I just want to, to, to thank the superintendent and all the other administrators and principals and coordinators and everybody that spent so much time putting the budget together this, at this stage, because that's always a lot of work every year to, to do that. And so appreciate all the work that you've done, and also appreciate the work on the School Committee side with Kendra, Lindsay, and David on the Subcommittee. And I know they had a number of meetings in the past several months, and so very much appreciate the work they've done. The other comment I would make, and you, Dr. Galston, you alluded to this. Typically, after we do the public hearing, we would vote within a few days usually on the budget. This year, we're, we're not going to do that right away. I think you made the comment, and given the, the circumstances today with the, the pandemic and the closure of so many things. The budget process has slowed down a little bit, particularly from the state level and even the town level, there's lots of uncertainty around revenues. And so that's going to take a little bit wa, longer to work itself out. And so we will come back and see what happens over the next several weeks, and wait a little bit more for some more guidance from the town as to kind of where things are at at that point. And then we will probably come back and have some more discussions on the budget before we actually vote on it. So again, that, that may unclear exactly when that will happen, but you know, later this month into May, I suspect is likely. So those are two comments I want to make there. Again, I mean, the, the budget, the priorities, you know, are ones that, that I certainly would endorse, and I think you've done a good job of putting that together. Let me see if any, any of the School Committee members have questions, comments they want to make? Anybody?
Raise your hand, I think you can unmute yourselves, but nope, you can't, okay. It's hard to have your, sharing your screen and manage participants all at the same time. Let me unmute all of you guys.
Unmute everybody if you can.
I'm trying. Stacy, but that's besides the point. I think you're mostly unmuted, yes?
Yep.
Okay.
Not me.
There you are.
Yes.
Okay. So any, any comments or questions that people have?
Got her hand up.
I don't know if he can see me if I'm on his grid.
I don't know if he can see me if I'm on his grid. I was just going to say that the, although the process sort of isn't, isn't quite over yet because of sort of all these uncertainties and stuff, there was, you know, a lot of interesting and in new things that the school department was, you know, dealing with and trying to figure out how to manage that and still, you know, manage to be creative and get a lot of funded priorities. And I just want to say, you know, I really appreciate everybody's hard work and, you know, I especially like always how every decision and in ask is connected to the core values that the school has been working on for a few years now. And so you know, it was, it was just nice to see all the, the creative work to get things funded and stay true to those values.
Thanks, Lindsay. I would add too, that, you know, the, if I think about the initiatives that we've had over the last couple of years, I think it's important and I'm, I'm happy to see we're hopefully able to continue with FLESS to take it to the next year. And I do think the coaches have been a, a really important addition to the district. And that's again, happened over the last few years and, and trying to kind of keep that support in all the buildings. And so another coach at the elementary level, I know we're adding some, we've done a little bit more at the middle school level this past year, this current year as well. So I think those are really good investments. Any other questions or comments? Has anybody had from the public, you know, is there any? We had that email available. Did anyone?
Ariel, did anybody? Did anybody send you an email?
No.
Okay. Okay. So if there are no other comments, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. And again, we'll, we'll revisit this at a later point. We won't be initially, we talked about meeting on Thursday, but we won't do that because that would have been to vote on the budget. We'll wait until we get to a little different point where there's more understanding of what kind of budget parameters are likely to be. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the teaching and learning showcase. So this is a kind of an update on, on where we're at with the remote learning strategy, which has kind of moved up to the next phase, phase two, where we had our last meeting, we had the initial discussion about it, but I think now the district has moved to a, and all the districts across the state have, you know, moved to a different standing with this May 4th date as the, at the current date for closure until that date. So let me, Dr. Galston, you want to start or just?
Yep. I, so I actually, I'm going to have Dr. McGinnis walk us through the extended learning plan phase two. As she has been working, you know, diligently with her curriculum team as well as the principals to create the opportunities here in phase two. I just want to recognize once again that this it's unimaginable to think of what we've done in the last month. You know, I, I think that what we've done normally would take years and we're trying to do it within days. And, you know, it's, it's a work in progress. Let's put it that way. When you launch something, you learn in the launch that either your expectations were too high or your expectations were too low or, you know, and sometimes you hit it right on target, but this is, this is every day we're reassessing and rethinking. How best can we do this to, you know, honor the students, honor the faculty, honor the administrators, just the parents who are, you know, really, I think, true partners in this process, you know, tearing their hair out and then, you know, starting to get into a groove and feeling good about what they're doing or, you know, it's just every day is just different. That's all I want to say. And I just appreciate everybody and all the work that's being done. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. McGinnis, who's going to walk us through a little more detail about phase two.
Thank you, Dr. Galston. I couldn't agree with you more. I'm so proud to be a part of Watertown Public Schools and to observe what the teachers are offering to students. And tonight, we'd like to show the school committee and parents that are watching as well, sort of the background of the work that we're doing on this opening page of the extended learning plan phase two. In the bottom right-hand corner, I've hyperlink, which I'm not going to open at this point, but I've hyperlink Dr. Galston's community overview that she sent out last week, which has really great detailed information just for folks if they want to look at it. I wanted to have it all in one place, so everything's connected to this PowerPoint. The table of contents is demonstrating that we're going to start with our goals as we do at all times. Give you some information, provide you some information on a survey that we did for families and a survey also that we did for some staff. And then we'll end with questions and at the, the last four or five slides are the addendum, which just give a lot more detail on all of the additional roles of the, in the district. So to start with, I think it's really important to contextualize what's happening in just a month's time. So a month ago, March 12th, a month and a day, we planned to close for three weeks. We had at that time, no guidance from the state or the federal levels. So our educational planning was very responsive to the length of the closure, meaning three weeks. The focus was on the structure and connection with students, keeping them connected to our schools and as comfortable as could be given the situation. Right away, we worked with teachers, with our curriculum coordinators and with our principals very closely on an extended learning webpage. You might recall, we, I presented on that at the last school committee meeting. I've hyperlink to here for your viewing purposes, should you care to. Fast forward a month and our current reality on April 13th is the initial closure, of course, was extended until May 4th. It could go later, as many folks are aware. We do have a meeting with the commissioner of education tomorrow, all of the superintendents across the state. I'm not sure if we'll get information then, but we may. We do have some guidance now in a month's time from the state and the federal level, particularly around distance learning and special education. And the change that we've made and as many other districts have as well is we've increased interactive time with students and we've required students to participate in the learning provided to the extent that they are available to. Whereas a month ago, it was recommended right now and it's required. One more thing to consider before we get into the details of the plan. Our students, our families and parents, our educators are dealing with a lot right now as Dr. Galston stated at the very beginning of this, certainly worry, anxiety and sometimes social isolation. Developmental and learning needs, we've got pre-K all the way to 12th grade, and they have very different needs during this time. One big area that we have been working on over four weeks is access to technology and our technology department has done a stellar job working closely with our principals to, to provide technology to any parents that have made that request for their students. And it's ongoing at this time. Our special education and our English language learners in particular, need more assistance than we're able to provide when we're not in the school setting. Home support, we, we recognize that our parents at home may not be teachers, yet they're fulfilling that role in a great way. Sometimes students have a lost identity. And we have to, they have to balance different teachers' expectations, particularly in middle school and high school, because they have several different teachers. Certainly the space at home and the nature of a home has changed to be a schoolhouse as well. Some families are dealing with family members, extended family members or immediate ones who are sick and perhaps with the COVID-19 or other. Parents are definitely balancing work and children. High schoolers are also balancing work, some, some work and school. Language barriers, as Dr. Galston pointed out in an earlier slide, can, we have a high ESL population, which we're very proud of, but that can also be a barrier for teaching at home. And then, of course, parents are not trained in, as teachers. Our educators are balancing their young families, some of them at home, with teaching at home. And also our educators didn't have time to, you know, have all of their curriculum materials at home. So they're doing a stellar job in sharing and collaborating among one another and with our curriculum coordinators, online tools and certainly training. The key ideas that we use as the framework for our extended learning is recognizing and validating and appreciating that each student's situation is unique and meeting them where they are. Similarly, each educator situation is unique as well. We, our goal is to be flexible and adaptable, so it's ongoing and we're constantly adjusting our practice as need shows it is there. We recognize remote learning is very different from classroom learning and as in the classroom, our focus on, is on access for all students, which is a particular challenge when they're not in the classroom. We want you to know we are doing our best that we can, given our circumstances, and we'll continue to do so. The goals and the structures that we've set up, I won't repeat some of this, but basically the third bullet down is the district-wide approach is providing consistency among classroom in as much as possible to provide an equitable student experience. We want to ensure that we're effectively coordinating support for students and access to the curriculum. So we're striking a balance between two types of communications or connections. One is synchronous together and one is asynchronous, not together. So for example, connecting with students and educators in real time through Zoom, as most parents are aware of and certainly our students, that would be an example of synchronous opportunities versus asynchronous opportunities, which are the myriad of, of challenges, excuse me, of homework assignments or videos that students are viewing. I have a list on one of the next pages to give you about asynchronous. So in, in ensuring that we're flexible for our students and our teachers and our families. I'm going to, on a slide coming up, show you how much time we are estimating that we're going to use at the elementary level versus the middle school level versus the high school level on synchronous versus asynchronous learning. So the example under synchronous, when students are learning at the same time, is kids are loving it. The feedback from our principals is that they're more engaged and it feels more effective. It gives them a connection to their classmates that they might see on these Zoom meetings, even if they're not talking to them, they can see other classmates on it. And it allows for some instant feedback at times and clarification. Examples of synchronous are video conferencing, live chat or live stream videos versus asynchronous is students selecting sometimes, depending upon their family situation or a schedule that the parents may have developed at home. They're learning at different times. The communication is not live. It may be very convenient and it's certainly flexible as well, but it allows students to work at their own pace. So screencasts, flip grids, video, some kids are doing blog posts a lot at the middle school. It's pretty fantastic. The goal of synchronous learning is definitely the human connection and social connection. Those are our priorities and they have been since March 12th. Some more examples of synchronous learning time is teachers often communicate the learning plan for the week to families and students. They may preview activities. They may answer some questions about assignments or activities. Definitely clarify what's going on during that time. This is the slide I referenced earlier. So the structure for students, so this is what it looks like for a student. Any, from early childhood, which is about two hours a week. And I, I don't think I'm going to click through all of these documents, but I'll just start with a couple of them to show you. Bear with this. Okay. So here is an example of our, the third week for our little pre-K littles, as we call them. And it's wonderfully designed with math literacy, science and social science. Very important fine motor and speech for the little kids. And then our special areas of arts, movement, music and sensory. So the team, pre-K team has developed these wonderful examples of lessons for students to learn and then a draft schedule at the bottom for parents to use to help along. So we're just adding on to that. Let me get back to the main one. There we go. Elementary. Right now, we have developed three Zoom sessions for math literacy. And the third one, we was live, but we are debating going back and forth between having more flexibility with asynchronous. It may be videos or activities for science or social studies. Then there's a community meeting for connection. And then there are specials, of course, that are really important to lift the spirit and the enjoyment for students at home. So art and music and PE and library and our FLESS classes as well. I'm not going to click on these documents here, but you certainly can at your own time. I'm going to flip to middle school. Middle school has five classes, approximately 30 minutes of virtual classes. And then it has physical education and they're, each student in the middle school has a special. So that's one hour because there's two classes there. And then a 30-minute advisory or community meeting during their advisory, which totals approximately four hours of virtual time. Then also in addition to that, there's assigned work, which averages around 15 or 20 minutes a day per class. And that changes depending upon the class. And then teachers have made themselves available for office hours at the middle school level too, for extra help, maybe some specific discussion, discussion in smaller groups. The rubric that I'm going to pull up here that we're using for the fourth term at the middle school is a pass or no credit or credit or no credit. And as you can see here, you know, it's difficult to grade in the ways that we would assess students while we're in school. So what we have determined is we want as much participation as kids are able to do with their parent support. So our pass credit is students participating in at least 60% of the learning opportunities that are offered from their teachers. And no credit would be a student who did not participate in at least 60% of the learning opportunities. There's some more details under, underneath there. Learning opportunities are include, but not limited to online course meetings, discussions, assignments, projects, et cetera, is determined by the teacher. And I'm just going to finish high school, Lily, and then I'll answer your question if that's okay. Down below in another slide, I have an example of a schedule for the middle school, but there's also another one there. High school has seven classes. So about 30 minutes apiece. And then they also have the community meeting for connection during their advisory. Office hours available and a similar rubric to the middle school, the credit, no credit, 60% versus not. The high school, actually, I'm going to flip, I'm going to bear with me one second. I'm going to answer your question, Lily. If I can figure out, here you go.
You can unmute her.
I have to unmute Lily? Oh, boy, that one. I haven't done this.
Okay, hold on. I can do it.
Yeah. You're muting. That would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just, Theresa, can you clip back onto the rubric, please, for the either middle school or high school?
Sure.
I just want, if I could just get a little bit of clarity, it says, you know, it's participated in 60%. And I assume that that's including both the synchronous and the asynchronous types of learning. Is that correct?
It is.
And then in terms of met or exceeded the criteria and the requirements, the assignments, how does that go with the 60%? So like, let's say that they do participate in 60%, but they do all of those assignments poorly. Would that impact things? I just, I would like a little bit of clarity around how that's going to function because I'm struggling with this myself and I haven't figured this out in my own head. But I'm wondering where people are thinking or if this is something we're going to kind of, kind of continuously reevaluate as we move forward because it's a struggle.
It, thank you for saying that second part, the latter part of your comment, because that's precisely what we're doing. In fact, we had a long meeting this afternoon with all of the curriculum coordinators and with some principals and we had this discussion. And so what we have decided to do is we, we give this as our boundary, right? Credit, no credit and this 60%. And by, because we're fortunate and we have curriculum coordinators for each department, they'll be helpful in helping teachers monitor how we're doing that. So the autonomy is the teacher giving assignments and making that determination. Did the student do 60%? Did the student do 60% of the work that I presented? Now, what's going to make this sort of calibrate this, if you will, like you're mentioning here, is the departments, part of the beauty of our schedule here is the departments are meeting weekly. So conversations will come up weekly, right? Well, you know, what are you doing in US history across all of these US history classes with different teachers? So it's one of these things that's going to develop over time and we'll have to, certainly at our next meeting, we can give you more information on that. But we just sort of set this up last week and so, you know, kind of.
I think that's just kind of the point I wanted to make sure people really understood was just how much we're all learning on the job in a sense. These are really good basic guidelines and I think, you know, parents are feeling a lot of anxiety about how this is going to play out. And what they have to just really understand is that we don't know. And that's okay, because all the teachers are really committed to equity and to trying the best for the students. And I really do appreciate though that you've set some basic guidelines. And then the kind of staff will be in constant communication about how to apply those guidelines. And the fact that it might look a little bit different in different classes based on the needs of those courses. Especially between middle and high school. So thank you. I really appreciate that and I look forward to updates as we move through this experience. And again, hoping that the community just hears that this is going to be a learning process for everybody involved. Thank you.
Absolutely is. But our teachers work so well together figuring this out. And under the structure that we've set up with weekly meetings, which they used to have monthly department meetings, but with this structure, they have weekly, which that's one of the benefits, right? To figure out, you know, what's best to make sure that we're supporting all students with reinforcing their skills and also with prioritizing new key comments, concepts at the high school. Let's see. Okay, so now time expectations for our educators, right? So the last slide was students. This slide is for the educators. So at the elementary level, let's just give an example of third grade classroom would have the three 30-minute sessions, two synchronous, math and literacy, and then one asynchronous, science and social studies. The 30-minute community meeting and then two hours a week of collaborative meetings to do all of this planning that we're discussing. Similarly, is the secondary one adjacent to it. So what is the asynchronous time used for, for educators? So in that box below, there's tons of responding to emails, of course, providing feedback to students in small groups often. Learning all of these new digital tools that we're using and investigating others and sharing with their colleagues. There's so much time spent on that right now. Outreach to parents, collaboration with colleagues, attending all of these meetings, faculty meetings, we have once a week. So principals are holding those faculty meetings just to keep everybody connected on the same page and supported. Our elementary curriculum coordinators are doing grade level meetings. So we're breaking it down to a K meeting, a one meeting, a two meeting, et cetera. So it's really giving that support that's needed during this plan. And then I put in capital letters the word plan. There's a ton of planning that's going on. So that's what teachers are spending an inordinate amount of time doing in this asynchronous time for themselves. Really important, our special education, our students on IEPs and our ESL teachers working with our language learners. So these folks have created fantastic schedules focused on providing individual instruction where possible. In addition to reaching out to parents and scheduling additional small group instruction. So it's a lot of communication that's happening with these folks, including our reading specialists and our liaisons, you know, our speech OTPT. They are, all of our mental health professionals have terrific plans in place to support the students in the external classrooms, if you will. Our primary digital platforms for the synchronous learning is Zoom, as I've mentioned before, and Google Hangouts Meet. And then for asynchronous learning, our grades three through 12 use Google Classroom. So students are very familiar with that. Some teachers who didn't use Google Classroom, maybe in a younger grade, some of them are even, you know, dabbling in that as well. But they also use the SMORE newsletter to consolidate all of their planning to help students at home. I put an asterisk there about Zoom just because we all see so much, of course, on, in the news about it. And they're adapting well to it. So we've learned how to be safe with it so that we can protect student privacy and certainly any unwanted guests. We're learning by doing, I will have to say, just like every other school district. But some of the things that we're doing and using is the waiting room feature that Dr. Galston used this evening with us. Locking meetings once they begin, disabling screen sharing. So generally, it's only the host or tonight. It's two hosts. I'm a co-host with Dr. Galston tonight. Only enabling a community chat, requiring passwords, et cetera. And Dr. Galston, in her community outreach to parents, as well as to staff members, has reiterated no recording or reproduction of the video conferences as well. At the elementary level, our curriculum coordinators and our fantastic coaches as well are doing a lot of the background work. And they provide a weekly extended learning plan in these grade level meetings. And what it is, is sort of a resource bank for teachers to select from. It's developed by the coordinators and coaches and plenty of the teachers also. We design it around learning goals by grade level. And we make sure that the activities in as much as possible are universally accessible to all of our students. And so input from our knowledgeable special educators and ESL teachers is really important in that. It's a balance between skills and concepts. And really important, so I bolded the word, a balance between online and offline learning activities. We listen to our parents who have communicated to our teachers and to our principals wanting to make sure that there's a balance of that so that they're, you know, some of them have three children and, you know, maybe one computer or maybe two. And so we need alternatives to support the learning there. But it's up to our classroom, to teachers, teachers, we trust with their knowledge and their expertise to determine the number and the sequence of activities that they're going to assign to students or use with their students. They know best. They know their students best. And every weekend, just as the parents receive the wonderful SMORE newsletter from our principals, the teachers also receive a separate one with lots of good information. And so it's really fun for Dr. Galston and I to go through those newsletters to both the parents and the staff separately. And we then get to click on the smores or the newsletters that go to each class, grade levels. And you should see the phenomenal, you know, engaging instruction that teachers are providing students through this process. It's pretty remarkable. Secondary, the middle school and high school is very similar. It's a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. And the one thing, the bottom bullet there, lots of families want, 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 you know, maybe push it even further. And now that they have this, the wonderful resources, our extended learning webpage on the Watertown Public Schools webpage and all of the resources that teachers have provided. And we certainly support whatever parents want for their children. It's not, we're not, you know, in making sure that teachers are supplying a ton of extra materials to extend the curriculum. We're more focused on making sure we're reinforcing the skills that are already taught. We're applying and deepening these skills to prevent regression. That's very important to us. That we're catching up students who may have been even behind prior to March 12th. That's critical that we focus on that. And then certainly prioritizing new key concepts through the end of the year if, or March 4th, excuse me, May 4th right now, or if it goes longer than that. Here is the example of a middle school schedule. And the highlighted yellow part of it is showing when the Zoom meetings are with teachers. This is just one example. Schools in session from 10 to 3:30. Students attend synchronous classes each day per grade and teacher schedule. So this is an example highlighted of one student per se. Other periods are set aside for students to work asynchronously. And overall, the work expectations for the middle school is about two to three hours a day, closer to three hours a day, which is half the day, which the Commissioner of Education gave us for a guideline. Monday on middle school, Monday is the heavy day because that's where they kind of, you know, set the week up for the learning goals for the students. And then they have various office hours where students can attend as well for the rest of the week. High school, again, 10 to 3:30. Students, we've organized this so that there's not crossover of classes. Students attend synchronous classes each day. It's overall, the expectations at the high school level are three to four hours a day, more towards the four hours a day. And then Dr. Galston sent out a survey to parents wanting to gather some feedback right away so that we can be flexible and adapt and adjust our practices getting this information. And the first thing that we asked was, you know, moving into phase two after the first three weeks, if they could give us some feedback on the learning activities that their children are receiving. And so as you can see on the bar graph here, the very top line is preschool and the bottom line is high school, just so you can see. So the green, bright green there is sufficient. So for example, preschool would be about 75% of parents, a little bit more, feeling that the learning activities were sufficient for their children. The blue area is not enough learning activities and the yellow area is too much learning activities. So we felt that that was a pretty good first round of survey information to share with us that we were pretty on target of, you know, averaging 70, low 70% that felt it was sufficient. But certainly, teachers are taking this into account at their own classroom level as well. And the other one we asked is the FaceTime. That's the synchronous time that I've been describing throughout this. Is that FaceTime enough? And again, the green is illustrating the sufficient time and the blue, not enough time, and the yellow, too much time. It sort of parallels almost, except the middle school's a little bit lower, parallels the last slide as well. Then finally, the third question to the parents was, you know, we're transitioning from tradition, we're transitioning from traditional school to virtual. What's the most challenging aspect of this? And so as you can see in yellow, time management. Trying to figure out a schedule, how to manage their home time. A lot of parents have shared really poignant stories with us to help us understand what they're dealing with, which we really appreciate. But also, you know, the second most selected one was that everything is going as well as can be expected. And I really like how Dr. Galston gave that. We didn't say great. We didn't say the best. We said as well as can be expected. So that was pretty good to read. And then finally, we did a survey to staff after we did a professional, we offered a professional development day on Friday, April 3rd. And our teachers, just to give you an example of the initiative that our educators, mental health folks, teachers, stepped up to the plate. Dr. Galston sent out a request and said, you know, there's a lot of training that needs to happen and teachers are way advanced. And we'd like to share some of the wealth and be able to collaborate. So she said, let me know if you're interested in, in three or four days from now, running a training session for your colleagues, peer-led sessions. And we ended up with 32 staff members running peer-led sessions. And the, our staff were able to select, they looked at the chart, they selected when they could attend and what they were interested in of these 32 fantastic offerings. And here is the results, here are the results of this training day. So the first pie chart is showing that, let's see, about, how many women? Oh, the number of participants, sorry about that, in each session. Just look at the bottom one. And it says, would you be interested in repeating your session? So these are teachers that have taught it at some point in the coming weeks. Because what we'd like to do is develop more opportunities for these kinds of trainings because teachers are very receptive to them. And 100% of those people who led the presentations are interested in presenting again. It's 81% said yes and no, no one said no. And the others were just more about yes, but I would like to present audiobooks or whatever, something different or try more advanced training, et cetera. But 100% of people were interested in leading it. So it was pretty much a goldmine.
If I could just jump in for one second, can you go back? I think it's, I mean, when you look at the top chart, it's really talking about participation. And you can see that, I mean, there were sessions that had 60 people in them. And really, you know, most of them had more than 10. And the sweet spot was around, you know, 20 to 30. And that's on a, it wasn't required, it wasn't expected, it was simply, you know, come if you want to. And I think we had almost probably three quarters of the staff that participated and have been going back and looking at the, the training sessions that have been posted on the website so they can go back and review. And like we said, like Theresa said, we'll be doing this again because as we keep learning, there's more, more to be shared. So it was just very impressive.
Really good point. So these 32 sessions were all videotaped also. So, you know, you have to have a little bit of vulnerability to try this new forum and be videotaped so that our, we could expand it to people who are not available at certain sessions. So that was a good idea as well. And then, you know, with all of this online work, it's important to look at, think about safety protocols because they're different than when we can protect our students, you know, at school with what they're feeling or thinking. And so a couple of scenarios that we have here of safety response protocols for, for staff. The first scenario is, you know, if a student, if there's a student safety concern, if, you know, a student contacts a teacher or an educator and discloses that they are considering harming themselves, feeling unsafe, what, any of those myriad things. Just, you know, giving teachers information right, right away. And then also if a student in scenario two is overwhelmed, not knowing where to start, et cetera. Just some ideas of how to deal with that and who to follow up with afterwards. Because we want, we want to support the teachers who are supporting the students as well. And the second slide on safety is around families. You know, they're under added stress. We recognize that because we are families ourselves as educators. And so we just wanted to provide resources at their fingertips. And so as you can see, this is a list of really important local agencies that support our schools. So I am open to any questions that you have. The last four or five slides after this one, just provide more roles and responsibilities and an addendum if you had interest in digging deeper into, into the program. I'm going to escape out of this now so I can see you. Can't quite see you when I'm doing that presenting. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think we have to get unmuted. I think I'm unmuted, but most people aren't.
Edie, can you unmute?
She's muted.
Look, I am myself.
Keep working on it. You got a couple more.
Lilly and Mark.
Yeah, anyone else there? But let me just, I'll start off here just to say, just to say thank you to, to Dr. McGinnis and everybody else. Kind of goes without saying that as it's a lot of work that's been going into this. It's, I think, Dr. Galston made the comment that it's, we're kind of doing in a week or so what would have normally taken a year or some kind of metric like that. And I think that that's probably true. It's a huge undertaking for, to put this together. So thanks to everybody from, you know, teachers, everybody in the district. I have a few specific questions, but maybe let me open it up first to the committee, see if anyone else has other questions.
I have a question, question. Mainly a comment. I know you had a slide about the elementary schools. And I just wanted to note, I've been so impressed with how the teachers at the elementary schools have been handling this. And not only are they, have I seen consistency between grade levels, but consistency within grade levels too, where they're all working together, putting, you know, it's like the grade two, some more, the grade four more. But you could just see there's so much consistency within what they're doing and how they're working together. I've just been really impressed.
Yeah, I'm impressed by them as well.
Okay. Other, other questions, comments from people? You know, Lindsay?
One was, one was a comment, and the other one was a question. So just quickly, you know, the, the comment is, you know, that, you know, so much thoughtfulness has, has gone into the, the whole plan. You know, in, in sort of how it's been rolled out and trying to engage as many kids as possible, you know. And I get, you know, so many comments from, from different parents that I talk to that just really have such, such varying needs. You know, and I think one of the major things that, that we can't differentiate for, which is the, the number one level of the playing field who we had was everybody in a building together, you know. We can't differentiate away. The number one level of the playing field who we had was everybody in a building together, you know, and we can't differentiate away people's home situations. But I think that, you know, the amount of collaboration and communication that's happening is kind of really trying to do. The school is trying to do the best they can for for every kid, you know, and it's it's not possible to to meet exactly what everybody needs out of it. And I think, you know, a lot of parents have have come a long way in the last few weeks that I've talked to, trying to understand. The possible various situations of their neighbors, their kids classmates and the teachers who who are working with these kids. And so, you know, I think a big part of that, that understanding of the community has come from the communication by the schools and it's been well done. My question is is really about, you know, do we anticipate any other sort of major phases or shifts in the plan? If we're out of school a lot longer.
That's a great question, Lindsay. So we, of course, anticipated that as well. And so all of our planning was not just till May fourth. It was, okay, so if we continue until June sixteenth, will this plan work? And the answer is yes, this plan will work. So we developed in that way. But also, if we go back to school, how will this plan feed into that? So we had both of those in our head, not in perfection, but they're both in our head, but definitely the the former was what our goal was. If it continues past May fourth, is this a solid plan? And it is.
Thank you.
Great, great, thanks. Yeah, Lily.
Just say something.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Dee.
Okay, I'll just wanted to add to Lindsay's first comment. One of the things that, and I see we have a principal out there as well today. But one of the things that I want to just go on record talking about is that the outreach that the principals have done. To check in, I mean, we we keep track of people who have come to the Zoom meetings and people who haven't come to the Zoom meetings and. You know, reaching out to find out, is it because of access in terms of internet? Is it because you're just overwhelmed and you you just can't get there? Is there something going on with your family? Can we support you? I mean, it is, I I can't even imagine how many hours that the, and it's not just the principals, it's the whole like support staff, the mental health support staff. But that's part of the key of this is making sure that, you know, is there something standing in the way? And yes, you're right. I mean, we're never going to replicate school. That's not our goal in any way, shape or form. But at least what can we do to make sure that you're able to access it if if you can? And if you can't, you can't. And then we will take care of you when you get back. You know, I I put that in my statement that, you know, we we will meet our kids when when they walk back in the doors wherever they're at and we'll take care of them. But let's see if we can't keep them moving along so that when the doors open back up again, that it's not as steep of a curve as it could be. So just thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, Lily, Lily.
So I'm sorry, I I might have missed a couple of things because I had to put my son to bed. But I just, one, I just want to echo just how profoundly impressed I've been with the experiences of my own children. Watching a kindergarten Zoom is perhaps one of the most entertaining, adorable and unbelievable experiences. And I just cannot be kiley enough of the staff that are participating in that, including, you know, I think to Dr. Golson's point, including support staff that are on those Zooms. Because a lot of the time we're seeing guidance counselors jump in and other members of the community jump in. You know, and IA has been there. I mean, it's just been really impressive just to see the number of adults jumping in and helping, especially at those younger ages where. A thirty minute Zoom is actually a real challenge for those kids and for, I think, the staff members trying to educate them. And I've just been absolutely beyond impressed with the job that I've seen done thus far. So just a kudos to the staff who are doing it. One of the questions that I've I've noticed a lot coming from the community is something that I think you guys could probably easily speak to of. What is being done to support teachers a little bit if they're feeling overwhelmed? Because I think that we hear a lot about what we're doing to support families. But I think there's something that, and I know that there's a lot going on, but I don't think we're talking about that here. And I'd love to hear a little bit about all the ways that the administration and the teachers themselves are kind of supporting each other. As we kind of move through this process to give our families a sense of what's happening a little bit internally to make sure that teachers are feeling that support.
Yeah. Great. I can talk about sort of around curriculum and maybe Dee Dee, you can talk because you work more closely with the principals themselves and they're doing a ton of work around this. But and also you said Dee, we have a principal with us tonight, so maybe they could speak to how they're.
But only if she wants to raise her hand. So.
Yeah. So Lily, to point it to your question, at the beginning, it's funny to see this, not funny, it's interesting to see this evolve over time. At the beginning, for educators, it was, okay, you're, you want us to do exactly what? What is it? You know, we're not, we're not, we don't have the training, how do you, you know, expectations, please don't put too many expectations. They were ready to jump in, but but they didn't know, you know, what we were, we didn't want to make decisions without them, I guess, is the point. So we set up systems that the, which a couple of the slides show that were for their asynchronous time to have collaborations. Because we didn't want a teacher to be on their own and not have that support. So I mentioned earlier that the department meetings meet once a week. But also the coaches at the elementary level and then some in the middle school as well. The coaches meet with the grade levels once a week, the curriculum coordinators meet. So they're trying to support and answer questions as they come. So what happens is we have this fantastic organizational structure where the curriculum coordinators will meet with a grade level of teachers. Then they'll meet with us and the principals and Dee Dee, myself and district people meet daily as well. So all that feedback gets into this loop so that we can figure out what are the needs or there's too much pressure in this area. Or we need, they need more resources in this area or myriad things that they need. We're trying to make sure we support by connecting ourselves the same way we're trying to connect with students at home. We're trying to connect with each other here. Dee Dee, did you want to add to that?
I, all I would say is that in addition to, I mean, I I do think we've layered in fabulous supports, not just in terms of curriculum. But it's also, you know, connections for the staff to make with each other. And I know that that some of the administrators are holding, you know, coffees or just gatherings for people that are not mandatory if they want to check in with each other. I've seen creative ideas that are going around in terms of school spirit or really just being there for each other. So I don't, I mean, you know, I think we keep encouraging people if they, if they're, and I know Kathy wants to say something too, but you know. We 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 know that sometimes it's not easy for some people. And so whenever we had an inkling or a message that comes across that that seems to be a teacher might be overwhelmed or might be going through whatever. Our administrators are very quick to make a call or try to directly outreach to to find out what's going on and see what we can do to support them. And and it happens. I mean, it's this is just, again, the a strange time where, you know, depending on your, you might be overwhelmed because you've got a bunch of children in your house. Or you might be overwhelmed because you're alone. So, you know, we just have to make sure that we're we're keeping in contact with our staff. We spent, sorry, I could go on forever, but um, like, one of the things that we did last week, I didn't do, I'm going to say the principals did last week is, you know, really touching base with instructional assistants. Or some of the hourly employees to make sure that they're connected, because we don't see them as much as we would say a classroom teacher. So I think we're trying really hard to 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 reach out to all of our staff, you know. So Kathy, you wanted to add?
Sure. Yeah, just, I think that the the message we're really giving to staff as an admin team is just the oxygen mask analogy from the airplane. You know, when when you need oxygen, your instinct is to take care of your your children first or someone else first. And you can't, you have to, you know, to put that oxygen mask on yourself first. Take self care is paramount. So that's really what we're messaging to our staff, to please take care of themselves. And and I think that that's been just reassuring because we know, you know, there's a lot on everyone's plate. And I think, you know, there's no question in my mind that every single one of our staff have gone above and beyond in terms of what our expectations are. It's really, it's it's hurting them. It's hurting them that they're not able to be with their students and provide all the things they know their students need. We just want to take that kind of that that layer of angst away that really the expectation is as long as as everyone's happy, healthy, like that's first and foremost for everyone.
Just one, one last thing and then we'll keep moving forward. But, you know, I, and I don't know if this is purposeful, if it just happened this way. But I think that by by having the the expectation that teachers deliver the weekly, the week plans on Fridays. Actually provides a chance to take a little bit of a break over the weekend, whereas I know other communities, it's you release your plans on Monday morning. Which if I were in that boat, I'd be planning all weekend long, ready for Monday morning. And I think that this is, again, I don't think it was necessarily intentional, but I think the outcome is that, you know, teachers can take a little bit of a break over the weekend. To get ready for the week. And then we have all those layers of support.
Hey, any, any other comments or questions again?
Well, I could play, Kathy, is that me putting your hand down?
Okay, all right. Again, thank you very much, Dr. McGinnis and everybody else for all the work and putting that together. Let me move on to the action items on the agenda. So the the main action item, the first one is the the school year calendar amendment. So I think as people are aware, there's a discussion and question about the April vacation week, which would start. Would start not, not this coming week, but the one after, yeah, next week, not this week, but next week.
I know, we're all losing track of time, I think.
Right, right. So let me turn that over to to Dr. Golson.
Excellent.
Prepared some information on that.
I did, and I'm going to find it. Here it is. No, where is it? Okay, it's right there. It's highlighted. Okay, there we go. So. Again, in this whirlwind, am I muted?
You're, you're.
I can hear you.
You're fine.
Okay, so in this whirlwind of the last couple of weeks, you know, when we all started this and we thought that we were closed until April the sixth. You know, we certainly felt that we would be moving forward with April vacation. But then, again, learning two weeks ago that we were closed through May fourth, it started to come up as as a topic of conversation as to whether or not we should work through April vacation. And I must admit that I I didn't consider, I I guess I was thinking about all the pressure that we've been under. And I thought that having an April vacation would make all the sense in the world. But then, beginning of last week, it came to my attention from actually our our union that potentially it would be something that we should consider. So we immediately moved forward and surveyed our staff and then followed that up with a survey of parents. So not to make any assumptions on what people were thinking or feeling, just to get a real sense of, you know, what people's preferences were for April vacation. And I think that I've explained that there's advantages and disadvantages to both. Obviously, the advantage to keeping April vacation is it gives people a break. As well as if we were to come back to school in June, it would give us additional time with students face to face. The disadvantages of having April vacation are that we have just established phase two. Our routines are starting to take shape. Our students are starting to engage. I heard today that many of our high school classes now have up to eighty percent of students attending. And I think that if we were to have the vacation, it would just disrupt that momentum and make that very challenging. And additionally, you know, we have no guidance yet as to whether school will resume or not this year. But if it does not, then it just keeps us moving and we're done around June sixteenth. So those were the disadvantages of continuing with the vacation. So I put forth the survey. I have here kind of a synopsis of the results. And from the faculty and staff, it was fairly over, you know, I mean, I think you can see from the blue bar that most of the staff believed that we should work through April vacation. There were certainly some that felt that we should not, and I completely understand why there's people who felt that we should continue with having a vacation. Administration, I think maybe that says something about what we've been trying to do for the last couple of weeks, might have seemed. Seen a real need for having vacation, but still, again, the majority said that we should work through and then support staff as well. And then from the parents, looking at it's disaggregated by level. You know, for the most part, it's about seventy, seventy two percent that said that we should work through vacation. And then, you know, an additional twenty, twenty three, twenty four that said that we should not. But you'll see here from the information that we gathered from the survey, it's obviously more of a secondary feeling that we should keep going and not have April vacation. And that elementary is a little bit more torn about whether we should have vacation or not. And I I will say, I I I'm not going to read too much into this. I mean, I shouldn't had any kind of, you know, interpretation. But I would only imagine that elementary parents, it's a little bit more challenging to, you know, manage and be there all the time for the students. Whereas middle school and high school using Google Classroom and just checking in, it's a little bit less of the oversight as it would be for elementary. So I can see where an elementary parent might be more inclined to want to take a break. But I think that we have to think of the needs of the larger community and therefore I'm recommending that we work through April vacation.
Okay, so let's. Ask for an entertaining motion on this matter. And the superintendent's recommendation obviously is to continue with the remote learning strategy through the, from the twenty fourth, first to the twenty fourth.
I would make a motion that we continue working through the April vacation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, comments?
Okay.
Lily, got to unmute Lily.
We're on it. So I just, I want to just actually very much deeply appreciate the amount of effort it went in to gather data, which I think is really important. And and the fact that we chose to not only survey staff, but we surveyed community members, which I think was a really important move. And it really gave us, I think, good data. As an elementary school parent and a high school teacher, I am completely overwhelmed right now. I'm exhausted. And I think a lot of people feel that. That being said, I also think working through April vacation makes a lot of sense in terms of continuity and helping my my own children have those routines. And so I do understand that parents are overwhelmed right now. And I do understand that people are feeling at the end of their rope. And I guess the question that I would like answered is, if people do need to take that break. What are we doing to support that? And can we do something to support that without making people feel like they're somehow doing academic harm to their child? If they really are in that place where it's become, whether it's staff or whether it's, you know, families. There is an indication that there are some people who might be reaching that kind of point where this is becoming too hard for a little bit of time. Is there anything that we can do or is there some alternative for next week to perhaps alleviate some of that stress beyond just the half day Friday, Monday? Kind of break idea that might be useful because I will say that I I do think people are starting to reach those walls and and might really need that time.
I, I would just a quick one, and and Lily, you mentioned this. So the, oh, this Friday is is considered a half day, correct, Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
And then Monday is a holiday. So so there is a bit of a long weekend built into this, but your question's still relevant there, clearly. Dr. Dawson, if you want to respond.
Right. So, you know, I think that obviously this is 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 fairly new for us in terms of whether we're going to have April vacation or or not. We are, you know, once, once the school committee moves forth and and either approves the recommendation or not. I have a meeting with our our principals tomorrow where we'll review the expectations. One thing I can tell you for sure is that our intention is not to take five days and cram them into four. So it's true. I mean, people have asked that question. Well, why don't we just, you know, do everything together? So, you know, whether it's cutting back on the, you know, one of the Zoom meetings at elementary or whether it's shortening the time with the high school or whatever it might be. The point is, is that we are not going to try to do five days and four and that we are very responsive. I I I myself need a break. I mean, I I speak for most people that, you know. So I think the other thing we want to do is is I was talking to one of a teacher about the fact that, I mean. Again, Friday is the day that we submit our weekly plans and I think we need to shut it down. I mean, I think we need to make ourselves completely unavailable until Tuesday. And I know that's going to be hard for people to necessarily do, but I think that that's, it's, it's. I think it's one of the the most important strategies that we can do as we face the fact that we we're not taking an April vacation. But certainly, you know, I I think that tomorrow, when we meet with the the principals, we'll be able to distribute to families and staff. You know, what what is the expectation for those four days that we are together next week?
Can I, can I ask your question?
Yes.
Just in response to that, I also, I I I understand that the point Lily is making and I respect and appreciate that. I also don't want those four days to turn into not four days of school, because that's the point. Have the school, we have the school then. If we're not going to have the school then, then we have it at the end of the year. But I don't want to do like a, it's a sort of school, but not really school, because that's not, we we have routines, we've set them up, they're really helpful. Well, it's, I think it's really important, both the data tells us and from anecdotal and personal experience, that people want to continue those routines. Because there are benefits and they see those benefits. I just don't want to find this medium, this middle point where, yes, we're scheduling school, but not really doing work. That that is not where I want to go.
Right. Yes. Sorry.
Other, other questions? Other questions or comments? One comment I would make, and I I I support the motion. I think it's a, it makes sense to go forward with that. We we still don't know, as has been pointed out, you know, will will we go back to school on on May fourth? We don't know that yet. And maybe we will, maybe, maybe we won't. But there is the other later in May is the Memorial Day weekend. So that's a long weekend. And I, you know, I think we potentially could revisit the issue of at that point, if we know that we're coming back to school in June, we could revisit the issue of perhaps adding a few days on to the Memorial Day weekend that and extend that a little bit and then have more in-class time, if the in-class time is going to happen in June. But, you know, that's a decision that would be down the road, because we simply don't know. I mean, if we never come back into classes, then then it doesn't, you know, it's a different situation, I suppose. But I think that's another opportunity to to look at if if there's a decision that we need to, there needs to be a longer break than just a three-day weekend. So.
Method happening right now, if a teacher does need an extra day, like, I I I mean, how do sick days work? How do mental health breaks work? Like, again, I I I am deeply worried about the mental health of staff members, and I do agree with you, Kendra, about the four days needing be school, but if somebody is not, for whatever reason, able to function, or if they need that break, how are they able to get that, as Kathy said, if they need to put the oxygen mask on themselves to do that, some of that self-care? How are we giving them the opportunity to do that?
Yep. So they, I I would, again, and we'll make this clear to staff, is that they need to reach out to their principals and figure out if there's some sort of a way to do that in this new world. And I I I think that, you know, it depends on on, you know, when when you have your classes and when you're checking in with your students, and is there a way to manage it through just looking at your schedule? But that's something that needs to be worked out with the principals, just to not disrupt. You know, we can't, unfortunately, you know, if we have a scheduled Zoom, you can't just move your Zoom, because that means that your kids might be in with somebody else's Zoom. So it is something that we can work with our our staff with the principals. So we'll make sure that that's something that's clearly communicated in the faculty meetings, that they should be reaching out and trying to figure out ways to, you know, do self-care as well as moving forward. It's
Or if they're sick, or if they're actually sick. I mean, that's my other thing. It's like, you know, if you're sick, you're sick, you can't get on your Zoom.
Right. And we've we've been pretty clear about the the, and you, I think somebody, it might have been Lindsay Cameron. No, I think it was you. I don't know. The point was that we've been working really hard to develop our plans as teams. So that if you, you know, if you're one person in a team, then and you can't make it that day, then you're you've got your plan already set for your kids. So it's not, the impact, if you're sick, shouldn't be as great as if it were you're missing actually FaceTime with your kids. So that is something that we've built in, and I think is working quite well, is to make sure that that people are in a team. If they have those situations where they're they they're not able to be part of it.
Is that K-12? So if like a science teacher at the high school was ill one day, or on like another science teacher could fill in, or the curriculum coordinator, perhaps?
It's not, it's not filling in. I mean, if you couldn't do your Zoom meeting, you just wouldn't hold your Zoom meeting because you're sick. But the point is, though, you have, you're creating a plan, a week-long plan. So in lieu of the FaceTime, you would have an assignment or something that the kids would work on, just like if you're if you're out. I mean, I, you know, I think that's that's important, but if, I mean, if you're too ill to conduct your Zoom class, then that's that's just call your principal and make a plan and figure that out. So it's like you would if you were not, we're just not using Aesop. We're not, you know, we're working through our administrators as opposed to, you know, because there's no substitutes, so.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? So the motion is to to continue with instruction next week on Tuesday through Friday. Those all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for that information, Dr. Golson, the surveys that you did.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda would be approval of minutes. We have the minutes March thirteenth and from March twenty-third, is there, I'm doing one at a time, I guess, is there a motion for approval of the March thirteenth minutes?
Sure.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Nice have it. March twenty-third minutes?
Sure.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Thank you. So reports. We have one, just a kind of any updates on the building for the future, Mark, from the elementary side?
I did send out a memo last week to the school committee, to the building committee, that we also sent to the school committee, which basically tells us where we are. I will say that we're going to have to schedule some type of a meeting shortly to pay some bills and to try to keep things moving. I know Laurie and her staff and DeeDee and others have been and people in her administration have been moving things along with Kind of West and the renovations to the that are going to begin at the Phillips, and I I appreciate that. I've been meeting weekly with the project management team to get updated. They are, we're, they are also working remotely, but they're also still very heavily involved. And we will be having a meeting sometime in the next few weeks, because we do have a number of things we need to deal with, you know, including paying a bunch of bills.
Okay. And Mark, the the construction bids, as I recall, there was an extension granted for for those to come in?
Yes, that was in the memo, the extension. The filed sub bids were due on Friday, the ninth, we extended it to this, on Thursday, the ninth, we extended, they get extended to the sixteenth. And then the general contractor bids are now due on May, I don't have my calendar in front of me, like the first, May first or May second.
Okay.
And I will, I I did put this in the memo, and after speaking with the project management team and Scott, we seem to be in a an extremely good place when it comes, we couldn't have timed this any better from the standpoint of, it looks like, you know, we may be one of the only a few projects of this size that is continuing to move forward. So I'm looking forward to getting these bids together and hopefully it's going to be very helpful for us.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Well, and hopefully later this summer, there'll be opportunity to start the construction. No, hopefully that doesn't get delayed.
We're still pushing for July.
Yep, yep. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mark. At the high school level, DeeDee?
So at this point in time, we have received feedback from the MSBA regarding our submission of the preliminary design program. They have reviewed our submission and have several questions and comments that we need to work through and provide a response in the middle of the week next week. So the course of action right now is I will be speaking with the architect shortly. The architect is actually already looking at some of the the responses that we need to provide. And then we're going to work together to be able to prevent, present that to the MSBA next week so that we can keep moving forward in this process. So that's my
All right. Thank you, DeeDee. Any questions on those those reports? Okay. Also, I I asked if if no objection from the committee to, is my mistake for not adding it in, we typically have had a monthly budget report. And so if we, I think, is is Heidi there for this?
Yes, let me, sorry, Heidi. Let me unmute Heidi. There.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the monthly budget report, we we did have it later in the month, last month, so it's only been a couple of weeks from the last. And in the memo, you'll see some of the issues that that we're working through. As we mentioned earlier, right now, we do anticipate coming back May fourth and in the absence of any information otherwise, so we are still encumbering all the salaries as if that is going to occur. And in any case, we will have probably some higher-than-normal overtime for our facilities department, just due to the school building projects, whether we're back in school or not. So those are, those are items that we're still holding. The, as mentioned several times before, the money is still in the district administration line for the collective bargaining agreements not yet settled. We, if we do not settle by the end of the year, I've already talked to Tom Tracy, and we will accrue that or perhaps put it in a stabilization fund to be paid next year. So that does not show up on the report, because we can't encumber those funds until they're known. So they're just sitting, well, they're not encumbered, but they're still sitting in the district administration salary line. Obviously, we have the five thirty-six PO in that was discussed prior, voted prior, a fifty thousand for the middle school locker room project that was voted prior. The ESCO payment, which I explained, we are required to pay back to the town every year, not sure if people that maybe are newer on the committee over the last few years are aware. The first year I was here, I said, what is that? So anyway, essentially, a number of years ago, the town spent some money that was borrowed money, not just in our buildings, but other departments in town to upgrade HVAC or heating equipment. And then what we do is whatever's budgeted in our utilities that we didn't use for actual utility bills, we turn back the delta to the town in June through a transfer out. And they put it into a fund to be able to pay the debt service still on those. So it doesn't show up at the end of the year as a turnback, but it has been four hundred thousand in each of the last two years, and it will be two hundred thousand this year. So that's been going on for many years. So technically, you know, that that money is always a turnback. So I just wanted to point that out, that that PO is in, and we will be having that transfer out. We are, we, as we have been for several years, been doing some of the capital projects, some of them are on the CIP, and there may be things that that come up in the meantime. One came up last week for the abatement at Kind of West that we are funding through our budget that was not budgeted, but we have the funds to do so, and we have to move quickly just to stay in the timeline to, you know, for the building projects and the moves and all of that stuff. So that's that's something else we're we're funding. There may be other things we don't know yet, as as things continue through June. So there's a placeholder still in for the prepaid tuition, which we still anticipate. There's a placeholder in for end-of-the-year projects. We did do the high school painting that was on the CIP, and I notified Tom Tracy the other day that we will be removing that from the CIP as we do each year with some of the projects. If we are closed in May and June, then that's an opportune time for us to have the flexibility to have some of this work done to alleviate the stress on the facilities department with the school building projects. Should the schools be empty, that would be an opportune time. So that allowed us that flexibility. And then really, the hundred and thirty thousand I mentioned for unemployment, we're a pay-as-you-go district as our most, meaning we don't pay into the pool. I'm just saying this for everybody else that's on tonight. We don't pay into the pool. Private sector people have to do that, businesses, governments can choose to, most do not, because they very rarely have unemployment claims. But when you do have them, you have to pay one hundred percent of every check that is given to every employee on unemployment. And so we did furlough the people in comm ed. And I have to put in the high watermark, so there's a placeholder PO for that, if everybody does, you know, put in for unemployment, what we may actually have to pay out of our budget. So that's high-level look at the budget report. Questions?
Yeah, thank you, Heidi. Any questions? Okay, thank, thank you, Heidi. Also, reports, we have the warrants listed there, if any questions on those. None, then also the school committee chair, I don't have any a report other than to say I will work on my technology connection so that I don't delay the meeting for twenty minutes. My apologies. Superintendent's report, Dr. Golston.
Thank you. I I think that we spent a lot of the time this evening talking about what we're doing within the schools, and I think that Dr. McGinnis's report really provides a great overview of all the work that we've been doing, and I think we've discussed the fact that this has been just unbelievable in terms of of what where we've gone from March thirteenth to today. And I just want to thank the community, again, not just the 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 staff, but the parents and the students, certainly the students for sure, for, you know, moving right along and you know, trying to make the most out of what is really an unfortunate situation for not just Watertown, but the world. So but I think we're doing the best that we can, and we will continue to do so, and we promise again that we will take care of our kids, whatever that takes, and we'll be ready to roll once we reopen. Just a minor point, we we've had on the agenda for, you know, several weeks, a discussion about increasing some of the the rates for extended school year. That's something that we we aren't going to discuss right now, because it certainly with the uncertainty that we face, talking about increases that are above what would be normal is not something that we're going to do for our our extended year right now. That being said, one of the things that is, you know, in line with the contract is raising the the hourly from thirty to thirty-five, which has already been negotiated. So that is one thing that we'll be doing, because it's an extension of our school year, literally E S Y. And therefore, the teachers who teach in that program will be afforded the same contractual opportunity that they would have if it was regular day. But I just want to, I wanted to let the committee know that, you know, we are not going to look for more of an increase than what has already been contractually negotiated. And, you know, there's still some discussion around maybe the instructional assistants who work that program, but that's something that we can talk about later on down the road. I just wanted to give people a word about that. And I will be hosting a coffee on, I believe it's the, oh, my gosh, the twenty-seventh of April. And anybody who would like to join, I'll have two different times that people can can join in. And that's all that I needed to share with the committee at this point in time and the community.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Golston. Any questions? Okay, none, any new business? On the agenda? Announcements, I already noted that we will not have a meeting on April sixteenth, it's listed on the agenda, but we will not have that meeting. The coffee's already been mentioned. And we have the school committee meeting, the next scheduled meeting would be May fourth. Beginning of May. Public forum. I know there were a few people, other people in the Zoom meeting from the public. I don't know if any of them have raised their hand. I I can't see them where I'm at.
I get the, Amy would like to say something.
Okay, Amy, go ahead. Wait. Oh, there you go. Okay.
Okay, sorry. I wanted to bring this up earlier, but can I offer this under new business then?
Sure.
To maybe have an action plan for our senior students and parents at our next meeting? Just to allow some information of possible dates for either like our awards nights, our graduation that's coming up, a plan. We we know that we are, don't know dates, and we don't know what we're doing moving forward, but not to forget about this class, and that we are definitely recognizing the fact that they have important things coming up, and we are going to try our best to somewhat recognize them in a way that we best can. I know that maybe we could have a, maybe like a parent forum for just senior parents, that we do a video with some possible ideas and dates, and then maybe let them submit some questions that they have regarding the future and what that looks like for their seniors.
All right, good point.
John, actually, somebody from the community would like to ask a question.
Okay, maybe unmute them or unless they can indicate to you, because I, they're all muted at this point.
At this point, I think everybody in the group, I I'm are, I'm just gonna unmute everybody. Hold on one second.
Everybody, I'm on.
Yeah, Peter, go ahead.
I didn't want to say anything. I'm just watching American Idol from two thousand and six. You can mute me.
I think I'm going to mute everybody. Sorry. I think it was Pat that wanted to ask a question, if that's all right, through the chair.
My question was for Mark. And I was just wondering, Mark, if you could say something about the nature of the questions that the state posed about the initial applications for the high school project?
Oh. Sorry, Mark, I need to unmute Mark. Sorry.
Yes, I think DeeDee could better answer those questions. I will say, in my conversation with AI three and Compass Management, Compass Project Management, they all said that they were very standard across all projects that they've done, and I'm not letting DeeDee, you know, go more into it, but I I I think that I I think they're very standard, and we will, I will get a copy of this and get it put up somewhere. DeeDee, if we can get some help with that?
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, I think that Yes, absolutely. Um, and, you know, I I think that that generally right now, it's it's going through the educational plan um and looking at the space summary that we've proposed. Um, and, you know, we put forth a a very detailed educational plan um that we certainly believe is necessary to um provide uh the education that we're looking for. But certainly, the MSBA's role then is to go through that plan and, um, you know, make sure that the space that we've advocated for is you know, something that they can partner with us and um go through and figure out what things they feel that they can partner with us or things that they they can't. And so there's just a lot of questions just about that plan. But again, I do believe that they're, they are fairly straightforward, and um right now, it's it's a little bit of negotiations with the MSBA around what is realistic for Watertown High School. Um, I think we were pretty clear about the fact that we put forth what we would consider the best plan. But then there is, you know, realistically, what can we actually deliver um for our students based upon um what works for Watertown? So that's, that's where we're at right now is
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think, oh, I have one more chat question here. Sorry. Oh, no.
I know somebody was email, emailed in a question to me. I don't know if we got it.
This is Ellen, Ellen Rothman is out there who would like to ask a question. Is that all right? If I unmute Ellen? Through the chair? Oh, John's muted, so. Is that all right, John?
Yeah, 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 definitely.
Let me unmute Ellen. I feel like I'm a talk show host. Ellen, are you out there?
Yes, I am. Okay, but I don't have a camera on my PC, so you can't see me. I'm not sure if this is a question for Mark or for John, but um is the consultant on the um lease versus ownership issue with the solar panels for the two new schools, is she? I mean, it seems like something she could be working on at home. Do you, do we know if she is?
I did speak to Tom Tracy earlier in the week. Actually, la- at the end of last week, um, we're all losing track of time.
Yes.
Him, him and the bond counsel were working with the consultant to come up with the numbers that she would need. Uh, and hopefully, you know, at the end of next, this week or sometime next week, we may have some information, but again, we have not been meeting, so it's not I I'm not sure when we're gonna present that information to the subcommittee for their discussion.
Okay, but but Tom Tracy, I think that was the next step is he needed, he needed to do something, and he's doing it.
He needed to speak to bond counsel. They had a little bit of a difficulty getting to, getting together. I will say that COVID nineteen threw a wrench into a number of things where the administration has been, including Tom, who was trying to put together a budget, have been working on a number of other things.
Of course.
And and I put the, we did have a discussion li- at the end of last week, and I know I saw some emails going back and forth between Tom and the bond counsel.
Great. Thank you.
So I I would just add that I think what, you know, info, there's still information gathering, they're still doing analysis. But there, there's no decisions made. We haven't been in any position to even have discussions about it, so you know, that that process will will still continue. So there'll be plenty of opportunities for input on that issue as we go forward.
And by then, John, you will be a master at Zoom.
Yeah. Maybe. We'll see. I I don't know about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other, any other comments, public forum? Okay, uh, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aye, ready.